Good evening. This meeting of the Pender County Board of Education is now called to order and a quorum has been established. At this time, we would like to welcome our students from South Topsail Elementary under the guidance of Ms. Samantha Rogers. They will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance, performing the National Anthem, and give us a song called "I've Got Joy." So at this time, we welcome South Topsail Elementary.
(Applause).
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if we could stand for our pledge of allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. (Music playing). Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed as the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, for the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting there, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does the star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? (Applause).
Very nice, and everybody can take a seat.
My name is Ms. Rogers, I'm a music teacher at South Topsail Elementary. This is our fourth and fifth grade chorus, and we're going to sing one piece from our spring performances. This is one "I've Got Joy."
(Music playing). I've got joy, I've got joy down in my soul, I've got joy down in my soul. I've got joy, I've got joy, oh, I've got joy, I've got joy, I've got joy, I've got joy in my soul. When I wake in the morning, I feel the sunshine on my face. Hold myself with gratitude, that's the joy of a brand-new day. Flowing like a river, washing over everything. Nobody can take my joy, but everybody can help me sing. I've got joy, I've got joy down in my soul, I've got joy down in my soul. I've got joy, I've got joy, oh, I've got joy, I've got joy, I've got joy, I've got joy in my soul. It'll always be my song, no matter what the clouds make. And so I sing, my chest out, shoulders back, skin that's tall and open-minded, sing. I've got joy, I've got joy down in my soul, I've got joy down in my soul. I've got joy, I've got joy, oh, I've got joy, I've got joy, I've got joy, I've got joy in my soul. When I wake in the morning, I feel the sunshine on my face. Hold myself with gratitude, that's the joy of a brand-new day. Flowing like a river, washing over everything. Nobody can take my joy, but everybody can help me sing. I've got joy, I've got joy down in my soul, I've got joy down in my soul. I've got joy, I've got joy, oh, I've got joy, I've got joy, I've got joy, I've got joy in my soul. It'll always be my song, no matter what the clouds make. And so I sing, my chest out, shoulders back, skin that's tall and open-minded, sing. I've got joy, I've got joy down in my soul, I've got joy down in my soul. I've got joy, I've got joy, oh, I've got joy, I've got joy, I've got joy, I've got joy in my soul. I've got joy, I've got joy down in my soul, I've got joy down in my soul. I've got joy, I've got joy, oh, I've got joy, I've got joy, I've got joy, I've got joy in my soul. Oh, I've got joy down in my soul, joy down in my soul, joy down in my soul, I've got joy down in my soul. Oh, I've got joy down in my soul, joy down in my soul, I've got joy down in my soul, I've got joy down in my soul, I've got joy down in my soul. (Applause).
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rogers and South Topsail Elementary. We certainly do appreciate all of you coming out here tonight and your gift of song. Okay, item three, invocation, for our invocation tonight, we welcome Mr. Gardner Aiken.
Board members, cabinet, honored guests, we welcome you. We're going to ask if you would, let's bow as we open up in prayer for the meeting tonight. Our most kind gracious and heavenly Father, we do thank you so much for this time and this opportunity that you've given us, Lord, to be healthy, to be in this place tonight. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the ministry that's already been given to us through song. Dear Lord, to know that joy resides within us, sometimes we may not feel like it, but Lord, it's there. And we just pray in the time that we have remaining this year that we will just drive deep in our hearts to look for that joy. And we thank you for giving us reasons, dear Lord, to have hope and to have peace. We thank you for every member that's here, we thank you for every person that has put the packets together. We just pray for your peace that passes understanding, Lord, that the business that is done will be there to honor and glorify you and to serve others greater than ourself. We thank you for the parents that are here, we thank you for the students, and we thank you for their achievements that will be celebrated. Lord, I pray over the board now, as they make decisions that impact, Lord, not just certain schools, but the entire county, that you will again guide their heart, guide their actions. But in all, we give you praise, honor, and glory, and it's through Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Aiken. Okay, board members, at this time, do we have a motion to accept or amend the agenda?
I'll make a motion, but with some changes, if everyone is agreeable to it. I'd like to remove item 7.1, which is the calendar update, and make that an action item. We've got, we've heard everyone's concerns, and we have come up with a calendar here that we're going to vote on tonight, that I think will address a lot of those concerns, and will be pretty agreeable to most people, in my opinion, from what I've heard, as well as staff. So, as everyone knows, there's been a whole lot of talk about this, and again, this is a compromise plan that we've come up with, and it'll be presented during our meeting a little bit later, if this approval, this amendment goes through, which I'm pretty sure it will. So, the other item is, we need to have a discussion about our committees, so I'm assuming that would need to be an action item. Am I right about that, Mr. McPherson?
It'll be up to the board.
So is it to establish, I guess to establish committees that...
I think that it's already been established, Mr. Hall. This was just to be an information item.
To talk about the...
The committees have already been established.
Okay. So in that case, could we swap 7.1 and make that about committees, and then for action, make a number 9.9 for the calendar? That was my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion is, and the action is approved. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will move to Mr. Fink on our recognitions.
Thank you, Reverend. We'll do some recognitions now. February was a very busy month for Beta Club. If you're not familiar with Beta Club, it is a national club that focuses on academic achievement, leadership, as well as service and character. It is the largest nonprofit educational organization for youth in the country, and Pender County Schools was well represented this year at the state convention, which was in Greensboro. So we have two principals here tonight who would like to recognize some of their teachers and students. We'll start with Ms. Paige Garza. Coming up, she is the principal at West Pender Middle School.
So first, I would like to recognize two teachers specifically, and the reason that they're being recognized is not just because they do all of the hard work of making sure our students are ready for the national convention, checking volunteer hours that have to happen in accordance to Beta expectations, checking the grades to make sure that students are eligible to ensure that they can stay in Beta. But these two teachers are also the only two middle school teachers in the state of North Carolina that received the Educator of Excellence Awards for Beta. So, welcome Cassidy Miller and Angel Nelson.
(Applause). So, the first student from West Pender that we would like to recognize is Ms. Victoria Wood. She placed first in the onsite drawing competition, so she was given a prompt onsite and had an hour and a half to complete her drawing. She was very nervous going in. I might have persuaded her a little bit because she didn't want to do it so much, but I told her if she did it this year, I would never ask her to do it again, and she went in there and killed it and got first place out of everybody in the state, so congratulations.[1195.12][1195.12](Applause). And then next, we have Ms. Trinity Lamb. So Trinity took the science academic test for seventh grade, and out of the entire state, she placed second. So she did that before we went up there, so great job Trinity.[1228.12][1228.12](Applause).
This is never not off, so you're fine. One, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you.[1260.12][1260.12](Applause). So then we also have Nick Klickett, who is the principal at Pender High School. Let's just say Mr. Klickett has more than four people he would like to recognize today.
Thank you for that. Good evening, Board Chair, Board Superintendent, Staff, Families, Parents, Friends, Stakeholders at Home. Thank you. It's an honor and a pleasure to receive Trinity and Victoria as they come from West Pender Middle School into what is a thriving feeder pattern page. I appreciate the connection and the work to really put on display for key areas that any person should be proud of, that our students are thriving in comparison to students across the state and the nation. I have the opportunity as principal to get this rare moment to remind all that like my shirt, our current reality and the future is so bright in Pender County. I will turn it over to the people who really do the work, who I owe more than words could ever give, the adults who work beyond measure, full-time, in so many capacities, to make this a priority, to give kids and our students an opportunity to have the confidence and the skills and the logistics and the reminders and the reminders and the reminders to make sure they bring their A-game. So I'd like to invite and turn it over to my adult core team, who works at Pender High School day in and day out. Already had been announced Gardner Aikens, who does a lot, Ms. Karen McGowan, come on y'all, Bevin Stokes, Ms. Larissa Lupton, and Laura Aikens, who, without them, many of the great things of Pender High School could not be accomplished. And tonight, we have an opportunity to overwhelm this committee, a room, once again, with not just folks who participated, but folks who went and dominated. Ms. Stokes?
All right, come, students, because we're just going to round, come on in, students. Come on in. Come on in. It's too late.[1396.42][1396.42](Laughter). So, as it's already been mentioned, we went to Greensboro, North Carolina at the end of January and competed in the state Beta Convention. This year, we took forty-four students, so I'm just going to start reading our list of awards because we're going to be here for a minute. Riley Corbett, third place in biomedical technology, ninth grade. Elena Rooks, fourth grade biomedical technology, tenth grade. Jensen Bordeaux, fourth place biomedical technology, eleventh grade. Peyton Giaruso, champion health and science, ninth grade.[1434.12][1434.12](Applause). Bethany Ingram is fifth place health and PE, tenth grade.[1441.12][1441.12](Applause). Avery Kennedy was second place science, tenth grade, and I will mention, she was the only female on the stage.[1452.12][1452.12](Applause). Lexi Milam, second place social studies, tenth grade, and so she has a chance to actually try to repeat her national championship from last year. Mallory Hardison was champion in science, ninth grade. Lila Mantooth, second place US History, tenth grade.[1473.42][1473.42](Applause). Samantha Echols, fourth place psychology, tenth grade.[1481.12][1481.12](Applause). Kamora Lassane, fifth place poetry division two.[1486.87][1486.87](Applause). Charlie Rivenbark was second place in psychology, eleventh grade. Jody Pace, fourth place social studies, twelfth grade. She's not fourth grade, she would probably kill if she had to go after that. Chloe Moore, third place in digital portfolio. So those were all of our academic awards. And then we had some individual awards. Alyssa Williams was fourth place jewelry division two. Lexi Milam, again, champion in quilting division one.[1516.12][1516.12](Applause). Avery Kennedy and Elena Rooks were third place recyclable art division one. Emma Gideon's, second place, black and white photography division one.[1529.12][1529.12](Applause). Gracie Wells and Kaylee Woodcock, fourth place recyclable art division two. Eden Gerganus, fifth place color photography division one. And Riley Corbett was champion in digitally enhanced photography division one. And then to our, so a little few more individual awards. Maya Jones, second place onsite painting, division two.[1552.83][1552.83](Applause). Crystal Garcia, third place jewelry division one. Ellie Williams, second place solo duo trio dancer, and received for the second year in a row a premier performer golden ticket, which means she will be a part of the opening ceremony at Nationals with all of the dancers that were selected across the country. And she did her own choreography this year, and I will tell you, she has a whole new persona on stage. Let's see, and our living literature got fourth place, and our actors were Gregory Green, Ricky Armstrong, Kamora Lassane, Jody Pace, Samantha Echols, Alyssa Williams, Katie Hiddings, Mallory Seota, Carter Brown, Chloe Moore, Ledger Federonco, C.J. Allen, Maya Jones, and Malia Fullwood, who is accepting that award.[1603.12][1603.12](Applause). And then our robotics took fourth place, and that team is C.J. Allen, Andrew Zing, Chloe Moore, Jody Pace, Riley Bradshaw, and Brooklyn Davis. So forty-four students went, we brought home twenty-six top-five placements, which means they have earned that bid to Nationals, so we will be taking thirty-eight students in June to...
Kissimmee.
I want to say Kissimmee, but it's like Kissimmee, so I always say it wrong. So we will be heading to Florida, so we are super proud of them, and thank you for the opportunity to get them all recognized today, and we're just proud to be Patriots.[1641.12][1641.12](Applause).
Some of you, you all can go up and down. Yeah, you can. The visor.
That one can't be on the back.
That's going to be in front.
You're too short, get up front.
Take it now. My clothes will be on this rail. Seems too bad.
It seems like where it has.
Okay.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Appreciate it so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it so much.
And then we have a lot more recognition. We'll have Dominique Bates come on up. So, February was National CTE Month, Career Technical Education Month. Mr. Bates is our director. Extremely busy month, I think is an easy way to say it. Shed competition, vault competition at Topsail High School. You had a job shadow day on the twenty-eighth, where you told me more than six hundred students across the district participated. So it was an incredible month for CTE, and so you have a very special award to give tonight.
Yes. So, I want to talk about Mr. David Jackson, and I'll ask Mr. Jackson to come up as I speak about him for a second. Another thing that we had happen in February for CTE Month was, Mr. Jackson took about twenty kids, might have been more, I was trying to count in the room as they were meeting before they left, but this was Friday, the day before spring break, they went to a regional competition, and he's our carpentry teacher, but they went to a regional competition in Pitt County at Pitt Community College. And they placed very well, going to give him an opportunity to talk about that and just all that, I mean, it was amazing. He'll tell you all about it. But first, I want to tell you a little bit about Mr. Jackson. He's rare. He, in fact, is one of one. He's the...
CTE Month was Mr. Jackson took about 20 kids, might have been more. I was trying to count in the room as they were meeting before they left. But this was Friday, the day before spring break. They went to a regional competition. And he's our carpentry teacher. But they went to a regional competition in Pitt County at Pitt Community College. And they placed very well. I'm gonna give him an opportunity to talk about that and just all that. I mean, it was amazing. He'll tell you all about it. But first, I want to tell you a little bit about Mr. Jackson. He's rare. He in fact is one of one. He's the only black carpentry teacher in the state of North Carolina. But that's really not what makes him one of one. That's just one of the things. Mr. Jackson, you know, in carpentry, he builds the best of everything. It's the best of the best. And that's what he expects from his students. You can see, you can feel it whenever you go into his classroom, that the expectation is high. The bar is high. Excellence is what you expect from your students, and that's what they produce. And so, you know, you are not only a good craftsman when it comes to wood, but you're crafting dreams, you're crafting careers, and we appreciate you for that. And so I'll let Mr. Jackson tell you a little bit about what happened this past week.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity. It's not every day you get recognized for your hard work. And I don't do it to get recognized, but I love when my students get recognized. You know, rallies and state competitions are pretty tough on the kids. Some of them have never been outside the county. So when they get to go to places like Pitt County and Greensville, or they go to Raleigh, I mean, Greensboro for the state conference, it's always a nerve-wracking excitement for them. And it's me as a teacher even more so. But you know, you gotta keep a strong face. So I many times tell them that, you know, you guys are my receipts. You guys say that this program worked. You say that what kind of teacher I am, whether you do well or whether you do bad, it always accents of who I am. This administration, I'm your receipts. I mean, I was in the handle kind of for 17 years. And the support and the backing I get from my kids here are second to none. My shop is amazing. And that's from the hard work of the administration, from Mr. Bates, from this board. You guys give me everything where my kids can do what they do. It wouldn't be no me right here today if it wasn't for y'all's hard work, y'all's support. So I just want to give you a hand clap. For what you do, community, families that bring their kids, a lot of the kids are going on these trips. Just amazing. Now, when I talk about Pitt County competition, it's a rally. It gets my kids prepared for the state competition. This year, we took up 26 competitors. 26 competitors. We had about four spectators with it. So we had about 30 kids with us altogether. We brought home 24 top-five placements. Just to get you a little bit about what kind of competition this is, imagine being a high schooler, and a guy gives you a print that says build this. And you gotta build it from whatever Mr. Jackson taught you or whatever you can remember. So in the level-two competition, they had to build a platform, a set of stairs, and some walls. In that competition, we placed second, third, fourth, and fifth. Try to get to first place, we had a returning champion, Brian Lee. He went to States last year, got first place in Carpentry One. He was going to the Carpentry Competition, but he was neck and neck. He put it out really hard. And he's like, he told a guy after it was all over, he shook his hand. He said, "I'll see you at States." Pass off to Riley. His mother actually saw him last year walk across the States. He saw this magical moment that you just can't, you know, just to see the face of the parents, mother, and children, little brother looking up at his big brother. You can't make this stuff up. It's beautiful. So we go over to the level-one competition. We had two newcomers. We swept it. First, second, third, fourth place. All of those guys were, we only had four in the competition. We might have got fifth. We had another one, but they only allowed me fourth. We swept that one. Core competition. Level-one is very much like level-two, but just a little lighter. They just had to build a wall and then a return. But they was given prints, and they said, "Build this." Core competition, they built a beautiful key box. They used those to give to people after the competition. The kids do a great job doing it. Just an inside story. My kids had a tool list, and they told them to take a handsaw. So we took handsaws because it was core. It's the beginning of course. But when they got there, there were other students that had power saws. So the judges told us that, well, you know, they were cleared by their teachers using them. I said, "But you're, you know, it's a little back and forth." But our kid, little Adam, he stuck with that guy. It was like John Henry, you know, if you ever heard the story. He's had a handsaw, and he's, and he did an excellent job. I just don't know how they judged it. I know Pender was getting a lot of wins, so maybe they lean towards Wake County a little bit. I don't know. I'm not gonna say. But Adam was amazing. And he said, "Mr. Jackson, it wasn't fair. He had a power saw." I said, "Nah, you had him." I was like questioning, "That was beautiful cuts, great project." We had two quiz bowl teams. They had to study from 647 questions. Political questions, Skills USA questions, all combined. And we placed third and fifth in that competition. Teams of five, both five. We also had a mainstream tool ID. We swept that, first, second, and third. We only had three. So that's all they could give us. And then we had the construction tool ID. These students studied from 250 questions. It's online testing. We placed second and third. So it was just amazing. Kids were so proud and rolled their medals. It's just an experience. It's magic. It's magic. And I'm just glad, you know, I could be a part of that. And I just wanted to say that all of you were a part of that. All of you made that possible. So thank you.
Thank you. And we like the way that you so eloquently explained everything so that we can understand it. And we hope that you can explain that to the panel, who judges the NCAT CTE Teacher of the Year for 2024, 2025 school year for Pender County Schools. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Oh my goodness. I got so much to my head.
Your PPE.
I won't fit your head much.
We'll get it. We'll get it fixed up.
All right, hold on. Let me get my crown ready. You got me? You hold it up.
Just head. Keep your head still.
Ready? One, two, three.
And I've got to tell you, I just need to say right now, if you don't believe that our teachers do not take pride in their work, then you didn't take anything away from that gentleman describing how his students performed in that competition. So again, sir, I thank you for your dedication to our students. Okay, so that concludes recognitions this evening. Moving on to number six, public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight? Okay, thank you. On to number seven, information agenda. And we have moved the Board of Education Committees up to the, to 7.1. And I guess that's gonna be for me. So let me pull it up. We have three new board members. Oh, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. We have three new board members, and there is a lot of information that they have to take in. And they've got several different pieces of the district that they, several different sections of the district that they have to know pretty well in order to make the best decisions for our district. Upon a little bit of reflection on this, my decision was to go ahead and bring back the committees again. I believe that by breaking down the responsibilities into committees, it does allow for a little bit more focused decisions, making it a little bit easier for the board to tackle the specific issues without overwhelming them with everything else. In other words, we're gonna try to eat the elephant with a spoon, one spoonful at a time, giving them a little bit of time to have access to staff during these committee meetings, so they can ask questions and they can become as knowledgeable about how our district works as they can. So without any further ado, our policy committee is chaired by Mr. Don Hall and Mr. Tom Reeves. And we'll have Mr. Kevin Taylor as our staff member. Strategic Planning Committee, Jason Spivey Chair, Beth Burns and Mike Taylor. Curriculum Committee, Jennifer Hansen Chair, Jason Spivey and Brandy Sawyer. Legislative Committee, Tom Reeves Chair, Don Hall and Kevin Taylor. Finance Committee, Beth Burns, Jennifer Hansen, and Lisa Nowlan. Again, I think by having these committees, we are going to be able to introduce our board chair to the different aspects of our, of our function here. And I hope everyone is happy with their, with their appointments to these committees. And that concludes that. And thank you very much. Okay, so that is information 7.1. 7.2 is our strategic plan process update. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things. We're really, thank you, Mr. Wilson. We're really coming down the stretch. You'll notice, we started this back in September. We're now into the final phase, stage three of this, this process. Some of the slides you have seen, so I'll kind of skip over some of those. But the reason they're on there is I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that some of these things have been kind of clarified and revamped a little bit. Just real quick, our next steps, March is a busy month for this process. May, and then May and June, we'll develop the actual monitoring plan to go along with this, and I will implement that as well. Every step of the way, we'll keep providing these board updates. I think what that's supposed to say is, I think the lines got jumbled up a little bit. But these are our draft vision. I think the one over here to the, to the right is what we settled on. And these were based on the steering committee input and from cabinet, empowering each student to discover and pursue their own path to success. We started out with some, well, on this slide, pretty jumbled up words. And we ended up with that at the end. The next one talks about our mission. BCS will provide learning experiences that equip every student to achieve their potential and enrich their community. We really wanted to capture learning experiences and the learning and the community itself, so they're providing impact back to the community in which they live. The rationale, I won't read it off to you, but some of the things in there that we talked about were things like service to the community and, and building a bridge between what their desires were and what their actual outcomes may be. These were our core values. So when Dr. ReLove got here, our team, along with principals and other input, developed our core values that we set aside for our, for our, for our district. Ironically, or very systematically, a lot of the same, excuse me, revised core values are still there. They may say something a little bit different, but they're still there. Our core values are excellence, integrity, innovation, and connection. And those were whittled down from the list that you see on the left-hand side. There were seven core values, and we felt that was too many. And the Strategic Planning Committee felt that was too many, so we narrowed it down to four. But if you'll notice, resiliency, adaptability, some of those things that were also on the other side are embedded into the meaning of those other core values. So you can kind of see what those are. Happy to take any comments from, from the board back for consideration. How do these resonate with you? And if you have any suggestions, we'd love to have that input from you as well. You don't have to give that to me today. You can send that to me later, or join us two at a time for our Strategic Planning Committee coming up next week. We've seen this slide before. This was our, our eight emerging themes that we saw, which we have now condensed into the strategic priorities. And the most recent task that the county has undergone, county school system's undergone, is taking each of those core elements. One is academic excellence, investing in staff, investing in infrastructure, and investing in community, and really put those into a priority description, which encapsulates what we're trying to reach with each one of these major goals or major priorities. And then for each one of those, we drafted. These are all in draft stats. These, these are things that the Strategic Planning Committee have not seen yet. And we'll see those next week. But we wanted to give these out to you so that you could at least look through them at your leisure. Please provide us input if you feel so inclined. And our next step in this process, these are some examples of strategies. So when you build out a strategic plan, you're looking at what are your major priorities? What is the structure of that priority? What does all that encompass and encapsulate? And then you develop your goals. And from those, you start developing strategic strategies or draft strategies. And these are just some examples. So one of the academic goals was to, by 2030, BCS will provide targeted academic support to increase third-grade reading frequency from 50 to 70 while also reducing achievement gaps. One possible strategy for that would be to implement evidence-based literacy interventions in pre-K2, such as structured phonics instruction and high-dosis tutoring for struggling readers. So that's what we're coming up with as we continue to have this passed. We'll have this strategic plan built out over the next couple of months, and we look forward to presenting this to you in May. Thank you.
Next is number eight, consent agenda. Board, you've had an opportunity to look over the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions, or would you like to pull anything out for discussion? Okay, I did want to pull one item out for discussion. It was policy 3420-R, second read. Dr. Sawyer, I had a phone call this week from a parent that was, I think, a little bit confused about the, I think they misunderstood the English requirement. And I tried to explain to her that I believe that we are not doing away with our English requirement. Instead, what this was doing was doing away with the, the requirement for English for advancement, but they could come back and pick up that English through, thank you, track recovery using Apex. I think we still use Apex, correct?
Yeah.
And I hope that I had explained that correctly. Do you have anything to add?
No, a lot of the, so a lot of the counties around us and across the state have already removed English, because when you have English as a predictor for moving on to the next grade level, those students that maybe didn't pass English 2, when they go to 11th grade, they can't take the ACTs with their cohort above 11th graders. So there are things that are assigned to So there are things that are assigned to grade levels, so by taking that away, they can still have enough credits to move on, but they still have to make up English because it's still a state requirement.
I appreciate that. And this was something that was sent down from DPI, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, I had told that parent that I believed it was.
This was all with graduation requirements, credit recovery and all of those things. Yep.
Very good. Thank you for the, thank you for the extra conversation. I appreciate it. Okay, would anyone else like to pull out anything or from consent for discussion, or do we have a motion to approve?
Can anybody pull up your mic?
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is approved. Very good. We are now moving to action agenda. 9.1, our 2025-26 calendar amendment. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. My computer is glitched, and I can't, give me just one second to get back to. Essentially, we are recommending to the board that we adjust the 25-26 calendar to accommodate elections, primary elections of February 3rd of 2026. We have made this recommendation, and we have suggested dates in which we can change the calendar a little bit to make those work. So.
March 3rd?
March 3rd, yes. So our recommendation would be to, due to the sites on March 3rd, recommending a traditional calendar, move the workday from March the 9th to March the 3rd, same week of that timeframe. The Pender Lee schedule, move the half day from March 6th to March 3rd, or leave it as is. You can, Pender Lee's not a voting site, but we also want to respect the ability of our teachers to be able to get to the polling sites in a reasonable time. So that's why we made that suggested adjustment. And then for Pender Early College, no changes necessary because they're already on spring break. So just to recap, moving the workday from March the 9th to March the 3rd, for traditional, and then moving the half day from March 6th to March 3rd for Pender Lee, even though they're not a testing site, to allow for staff members to, to vote at that school. The recommendation would be for approval.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Okay, very good. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Next, vendor selection for child nutrition serving lines. Mr. Mike Taylor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. The first item for consideration this evening is a request to approve or award the bid for cafeteria serving lines to Chef's Deal Restaurant Equipment in the amount of $609,254. The serving lines will be placed at Surf City Elementary, Rocky Point Elementary, South Topsoe Elementary, Napa's Quarter Elementary. Those serving lines will be reduced in height to allow our students to self-serve themselves. Many of you remember the conversations we've had sometime, obviously, we had to go through a long process of measuring. These are manufactured to fit the cafeterias themselves. All the items are made of stainless steel, et cetera, et cetera. The funding source would be Fund 8 or our enterprise funding and a part of the child nutrition spend-down plan that we have submitted to North Carolina Department of Public Construction. Our recommendation is for approval, as stated, for $609,254. Are there any questions?
Hey, hearing no questions. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion is approved. Next on the list is Policy 6125, second read.
Yes, ma'am. The second read for this policy, if you remember correct, back from the last couple of opportunities we've spoken, this will allow our school nursing staff to more efficiently serve our students. Oftentimes, we were prevented from providing certain medications on-site due to our current policy. In alignment with the state policy and in conversation with Mr. McPherson, our nursing staff has provided these recommendations, and we, as stated, would recommend approval as proposed. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. 9.4, Policy 6420, second read.
This policy addresses the funding thresholds, or I'm sorry, the authority of purchase thresholds within the superintendent's domain, in conversation with Ms. Nowlan, Finance, and Mr. McPherson, more closely aligning with the state purchasing guidelines, aligning the superintendent authority up to $90,000. This is the second read. Having heard no questions previously, we would at this time recommend approval as presented.
Board, do we have any questions about this? Okay, we have no questions. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Policy 9120, second read.
This policy is somewhat aligned with the previous policy, but in this situation, we will actually be reducing the threshold to make sure that we're, you know, just completely being transparent with our Board of Education, our constituents throughout the community to understand what we're purchasing and when we're purchasing, especially these large contracts, such as our construction contracts that we utilize in the operations field. Having heard no questions previously, at this time, we would, staff would recommend approval as presented with the changes marked and read.
Hey, board, do we have any questions?
I have no question.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you.
The next three items are for Technology Services Department in our school system. I have Mr. Makin, who can give me some backup if there are questions regarding the next three items. The first one is the Microsoft Agreement Renewal. This would be paid from state funds, Funds 1, $60,868.82, which would be paid annually from our state recurring funding. Staff recommends approval as presented. Are any questions?
Board, do we have any questions?
No questions.
No questions? Okay, would anyone like to give a motion?
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries.
The next item is a request for purchasing of 2,000 student Chromebooks. We recently appealed to our county commissioners and were authorized a $700,000 allotment to purchase those Chromebooks. Unfortunately, it came in just above that threshold, so I wanted to make sure that I clarified that with our board this evening. We would utilize our technology equipment fund, that is state funds, for the $8,670.55 that is above the $700,000 allotment. So there would still be, there would be no additional local funding required for this purchase.
So out of $700,000, they could knock off $8,000? I'm just saying.
It was really.
There were a lot of offers. I mean, come on.
What kind of offers do you mean? What kind of offers do you mean?
We evaluated 16 bids. In that narrative, I think you would see a lot of these. But I had to be disqualified, two that were lower because they could not commit to pricing due to care of beers. CWD, it was the recommended vendor, and they were, I mean, they classed them as a great vendor for us.
How, how did they bid without committing to a price?
That's a great question. Which is why I became disqualified.
We asked them if they would honor their quote through this board meeting date, sir, and that is when they said they could not provide written documentation to guarantee that pricing until March the 12th.
So, let me just make sure I'm tracking here.
Yes, sir.
We've already got this bid as for, how much, what was it, $750,000? That was?
Well, we had up, our budgeted amount of allotment was up to $700,000. Yes, sir.
So we got documentation saying we got a bid up for X amount of dollars, correct?
Yes, sir.
And when did we receive that bid?
I can't answer that. I didn't print it in there.
I believe our opening day was the 20, was it the 26th or the 28th of February?
Of February? And we're giving them hundreds of thousands of dollars. They can't lock in a price with us for more than 20 days?
Again, these are many other vendors. This vendor that you are being presented with today, that is not the case.
Right, this is.
There were vendors that that was the case. Our default RFP stipulator or request a 45-day duration on any bids unless otherwise stated. Some vendors actually read that and will state otherwise. The majority just leave that as the default 45.
Do you, do you think these other people would have been substantially cheaper?
Nobody was substantially cheaper.
Okay.
Everyone, the, the two closest that were cheaper were within $40,000. Of that, again, it's, you know, we had bids at 1.5 million, and I think our lowest was 620,000. I'm sorry, yeah, 620,000. Once you add tax and others, that's once you get into our, our sub. So I'm sorry, I would say the lowest, we evaluated pre-tax. Sorry for the confusion with that number.
Well, I would love to vote no, but it's not your fault, so.
I'm not.
That's true.
All right, board, do we have any other questions?
We currently already have Chromebooks we're replacing, or this is a first-up job?
These would be a refresh, yes, sir. Once they reach a certain threshold, they're not supported. Additionally, we're not allowed to use them for state testing, and of course, all of our state testing is on Chromebooks now.
We repeat that to the public in here. We're not allowed to use them for state testing.
That is.
Yes, sir. Once the Chromebook people say we can't, basically, thanks to their lobbyists. You don't have to say that, but I will.
Yes, sir.
And this is funded by the request that we had of the county commissioners, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make sure everyone heard that also. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So this is made up then of state and local money, is that right?
Well, the $8,670 will come from our state technology equipment fund, yes, sir.
And how much is coming from local, because we had to go to the commissioners and ask? Do you remember?
$700,000. Was there allotted amount for this school system? Yes, sir.
Hey, board, do we have any other questions?
No questions.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Please say.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
See you next month.
We have a motion. Will we? Do we have a second? Okay, sir, thank you very much. Onto the, let's see, 9.8, data center refresh?
Yes, ma'am. The last item that we're seeking approval for this evening is to replace the existing Dell VX rail, which is our heart for the entire school district. This equipment is now over six years old and generally is replaced within five years. The server cluster, as it said, is our digital infrastructure for the entire district. The projected cost, the budgeted cost previously was $250,000, but our lowest bids came in at $274,550.33. This would come from state funds. The original $250 was also just for one year of service agreement, but this includes three years of service agreement. So that's the reason for the additional cost.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the Chromebooks, how long are they going to hold that price?
What was that question?
On the Chromebooks.
How long is the price going for from CDNG?
That particular price would have been 45 days. I can guarantee that won't hold through April 2nd. Yeah, we have confirmation of that those tariffs kicking off. So much speculation was occurring in this. But yeah, we would have to run another RFP for, for this one.
Why don't you stick around, because we might do something different later.
I'm here till the end of the night.
Thank you.
There's stuff we got to talk about, so.
Okay. 9.9, calendar discussion.
I make a motion that we approve the calendar that I originally made the motion to add to the agenda. Need I like to second that?
Well, first of all, do we have a PDF, Craig, that we could put up of this new calendar that's been? That's been, thank you.
Who's going to explain it?
So would? Mr. Hall, would you like to clarify how?
This, yeah, I will.
Thank you.
So, this calendar is, I'm not going to call it a compromise. I'll just say that the board has heard a lot of concerns, and I think that this will make a lot of people pretty happy. If I'm wrong, email us and let us know, is all I can tell you. But I mean, this preserves a lot of things that were important to most people that contacted us. So with that, I have a motion on the floor for approval. And I'll hold that motion unless somebody's got more comments or anything like that. Just please note, this is the first time the staff has seen it. And, you know, there, that, that's why there's no presentation on it.
Well, it was the first time that the board chair had seen it also.
All right, I have a motion on the floor, so we need to move.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion is approved, and that concludes our action agenda. At this time, we'll have comments from board members. Mr. Hall, would you like to start?
I have none.
Hey, Mr. Spivey?
None, no.
Okay. Mr. Reeves?
I have a few.
Go right ahead.
Visited a few schools. Met with some great principals. Mr. I can't, I'll probably say anything wrong. Pay Qu, Payquette? Payquette. Pender High, Ms. Robertson, Ms. Bates, Mr. Bailey. I get a lot of emails, and we all do. I want to, I want to see some emails where the positive. All I hear is negative emails. I get something about this, that, this, that, and the other. We have great students, we have great teachers, and we have great staff. I mean, we have a great superintendent and all of these folks, our great board. I would just love for somebody to email me one time about how, what their teacher did today for their student, or what my, what my child did today. Little Johnny got straight A's on his report card, or Suzie got this and that. I just, I'm, I'm just, I'm more positive, but all I'm getting is negative emails. Now, we did have a gentleman up here last week, or last month, that talked about our EC teachers in a positive way. I just thought that was so refreshing. But we, ninety-nine percent of what goes on in our schools is great stuff, but you don't hear about it. You just hear about the negative, and I'm just, I'm tired of it. So somebody please email me the positive. Something that happened, your teacher did this. A parent, a parent went into the classroom and helped out and did that. Somebody, please do it. And that's it, thank you. Oh, and also, I wanted to say, when I went to Pender High, there was a little girl that just got up out of her chair and walked over to me. Her name was Sarah Irving, I remembered her name, and she shook my hand and she said, I just want to thank you for everything you're doing for schools. And I thought that was just refreshing. She just got right up out of her chair, we were in the classrooms observing teachers, and just came over and shook my hand. So I thought that was fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, this past, let's see, I think it was a week before last, I went out to South Topsail Elementary for Read Across America and had the pleasure of reading to a couple of classes out there and got to make it over to some of our EC classes out there. Also, I think earlier I had seen a lot of pre-K teachers, if I'm not mistaken, in the back, and I think they've all picked up some, oh, I've got a couple more back there. And I just want to say thank you for coming out tonight, I appreciate it. Always glad to see our teachers showing up for board meetings, thank you very much. And that is about it for me, and now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McPherson. Nothing for tonight, okay? And we're going to go right on over to the superintendents update.
Thank you, Board. Just want to start off with, hopefully, what I will say is very positive things that are happening in and around Pender County schools. On March the twelfth, from four-thirty to seven o'clock coming up at Heidi Trask High School, we will have our kindergarten registration. And also, during that time, we'll have information for preschool coming out as well. Families will have an opportunity to meet our staff, connect with our community resources, complete onsite kindergarten registration. We'll also provide readiness bags to help prepare students for this important transition. Online registration is open on, opened on March the first, and we are encouraged, all families that have kindergarteners for next year, to participate. Pender County Schools is also hosting its second career slash job fair in our county. Pender County Schools will hosting the, the job fair on Thursday, March twenty-seventh, from four-thirty to seven, at Heidi Trask High School. Again, this event will bring together representatives from all nineteen schools to connect with potential employees, conduct onsite interviews, and highlight career opportunities in and around Pender County. With that, I do have, I'm hoping I will find it, but we are opening up for all positions, not just teaching positions, not just instructional assistants, but all positions in and around our school system. So thank clerical, we have opportunities in operations team with our maintenance department, with our bus drivers, transportation, we need mechanics. And so we will have staff, EC, traditional general ed teachers for all grade levels. And certainly are encouraging members of our community that are interested in working for Pender County Schools. It is a great place to be and work, and we are very proud of, of what we do here in our school system. So want to throw that out there, once again, it is on Thursday, March twenty-seventh, from four-thirty to seven. I also want to recognize Ms. Pollock, Denise Pollock, who is the Southeast Regional CIMC of the Year. That's Curriculum and Instructional Management Coordinator here in our CTE Department. She was the Southeast Region CIMC of the Year. Ms. Pollock was recognized during the State Conference Luncheon here in Wilmington. This marks the second time that Ms. Pollock had received this honor, highlighting her ongoing commitment to excellence in our CTE Department. As the Southeast Region CIMC of the Year, she will advance to compete at the state level. So want to wish her much success and luck. Pender County Schools CTE Job Shadowing Day, you heard Mr. Frank Bonner talk a little bit about that. He probably saw it on our website. It was fantastic. We, we got all kinds of pictures from students in and around Pender County and, and working. We are so thankful for all of those individuals. We had over three hundred individual hosts for our students. And so, yes, we had six hundred students participate to, to go out and job shadow because, you know, once again, it comes into planning their careers and giving them experience out in the workforce and seeing firsthand what life is like beyond high school, beyond compulsory education. So want to give a shout out once again to our CTE Department for pulling that off and just say a huge thanks to our community for hosting our students. The Shed Volt, you heard about that also? At Topsail High School last week, Pender County Schools hosted two outstanding hands-on career competitions, building sheds, and also with electrical systems builds. These events not only tested the skills of our, in these pathways of students, but they also gave them a direct link into internships, apprenticeships, and potential employment industry following their work in high school. So a huge thank you to our sponsors, our mentors, and educators who made this experience possible for our students. And the lastly I'll say is congratulations to Dr. Brandy Sawyer. She completed the Navigate NC twenty-four, twenty-five, a premier professional development experience. She was able to complete over this year and last couple of years, and she has gotten her executive level curriculum certification there, and want to say congratulations and thank you. Also, just some quick dates that we have upcoming. We will have for our committee meetings, March seventeenth. Ms. Burns talked about our committee meetings, that will be on March seventeenth. Also, on March twenty-fifth, we will have committee of the whole. April the eighth will be our next regular board meeting. And Board members, that concludes the superintendents report, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bree Love. At this time, could we have a motion for closed session?
I'll make that motion. Mr. McPherson, would you read it to make sure it's legally correct?
Absolutely. Proposed motion is I move that the Board enter into closed session subject to the advice from attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, point eleven, A one and A six, to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel information under GS one fifteen C three nineteen, and to consider matters related to personnel matters. And the Board will also enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, point eleven, A three, to consult with the Board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, dot eleven, A one, and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, twenty USC one-two-three G, and NC Gen Statute one fifteen C dash four oh two.
All right, in addition to that, I would like to add to the motion. If we can have just the Board for about two minutes before everyone else comes in. If everyone is okay with that in the motion, I'll make that motion. If not, I'll withdraw it.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is approved, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. We are back. Is there a motion to come out of closed session?
I make a motion to come out of closed session.
I will second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good, motion passes. At this time, I think Mr. Hall would like to make-
Yeah, me and a couple more here have got some stuff they'd like to say. So, tonight we voted on the calendar, even though no one's watching at this point in the meeting. I hope you find it later. I'm not calling names out, but a couple of you that have emailed me and that have been on Facebook, yeah, surprise, I was watching. You know, y'all all contacted us and wanted us to do something that preserved the Christmas break and preserved testing being before Christmas. That way it's all complete. So, we did what you wanted. And it wasn't just me. Anyone that says it was just me, that is slander. Anyone that writes that that was just me, that is libel. So, just so you know, it was not just me. That was a unanimous vote by the people that were present here. There are four of us here tonight. I can't speak for the fifth one, but, well, you know, you can email her and ask her her thoughts as well. Just like you can email any of the four of us. On top of that, this was not something that was planned. It is something that was decided literally a couple of minutes before the meeting started. None of us had seen it before. None of us. To the best of my knowledge, none. I had not, Ms. Burns had not. Don't know about the other two. Don't really know whose idea it was. It was a collaboration between the four. I want everyone to understand that. So, would the rest of you like to say anything to the audience like I have at all?
Remember, Vice Chair, Mr. Hall, I think you hit it very well. I think you said exactly what needed to be said. We sat here and we heard what you said. We saw the emails. We've been asked in public. And we reserved that break because we understand that it's vital for our kids to have that time. So, no, I think you said it all, sir.
All right. And by the way, just so you know, in case somebody didn't realize or didn't read it correctly, this is not, I repeat, not, for the upcoming school year. It is the year after that. Staff, am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yeah, I got something I want to say. Is, kids needed more instructional hours. Well, I'm here for the children. I don't, you know, I don't care about anything else. I'm here for them. They needed more instructional hours. They got that. Your parents who was raising Cain and just raising hell with us, yes, you got the December testing like you wanted. So, I don't see why anybody would go against this calendar. I mean, what is the problem? I think some people out there, it don't matter what calendar we came up with, you aren't going to be happy.